What a fellowship! What a joy to find leaning on the everlasting arm. What a blessing this was! What a peace is mine leaning on the everlasting arm. You know, I'm leaning on Jesus. I'm leaning on Jesus. I am safe and secure from all along. Yes, I'm leaning on Jesus. I am leaning on Jesus. I'm leaning on the everlasting arm. Oh, how sweet to work in this pilgrim way, leaning on the everlasting arm. Oh, how bright the paths that it grew from day to day, leading on the everlasting arm. You know, I'm leaning. Yeah, I'm leaning. Cause I'm safe and secure from all along. Yeah. I'm leaning on Jesus. Yes, I'm leaning. Leaning, ever leaning on the everlasting arm.
Good morning, everyone. Can someone say hey if they can hear me?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Not sure if that was Brother Smith. Voice someone a little deep. But yes, good morning one and all. Welcome to another Bible class. For those who may be joining for the first time or may have missed out a few of the lessons thus far, we are studying the topic of Lost: A Case Study, where we're primarily focused in Luke chapter 15, which is the parable of the lost coin, sheep and son. And we've been looking at it from a three-pronged approach, where we've been diagnosing some of the issues that have arrived with the characters. We've been correlating those issues to our own lives to see if those are things that we struggle with or are prone to struggling with. And then we've been prescribing some methods that we believe can help us to get over these struggles or to prevent us from falling into these struggles in the first place. So we've been looking at the lost sheep for a few weeks now. We looked at the first disorder that we diagnosed, which was scatterbrain syndrome, and it spoke to struggles with a lack of clarity and focus. And we saw how that can stem from ignorance, can stem from favoritism, it can stem from a lot of other areas. And we diagnosed that, we looked at how it affected us, and we also looked at some ways that we could deal with this. Then we moved on, and we're currently at what we call Bachbug. And this speaks to doubt and worry that comes as a result of being unable to see beyond one's own perception or beyond one's own capabilities. And we diagnosed that, we correlated it to our own lives, and we've been spending for probably the last two or three weeks, we've been looking at prescriptive methods. And we looked at one, which was a pill of present tense. And we spoke to that as dealing with our doubts and worries by focusing on what we have now, the things that we should be grateful for as well as the things that we can do in the present to deal with the source of our doubt and worry and not focus on the things that we cannot control. And Brother Grenell, in his message today, touched a lot on the worry aspect and the doubt aspect as to focusing on what we can do now and allowing the other things to pass us by until we can actually deal with them. And then we moved on to what we're looking at now, which is a pill of past providence. And this method focuses on identifying the things that God has done for us in the past and trying to use that to motivate us in the present. So thinking back as to what God has already done and using that as motivation when similar situations arise. And we looked at a few Psalms. We looked at Psalm chapter 40, looked at Psalm chapter 138. We're now looking Psalm 116. And there are eight verses that we'll be focusing on. We have already gone through 1, 2, 3, and 4. So we'll do a quick recap of those verses, and then we'll get into where we will start today, which is at verse 5. So Psalm 116, verse 1, "I love the Lord because he has heard my voice and my supplications." I'm not going to run through all the verses now. If you can let me know. But I'll just read through the verses. "Because he has inclined his ear to me, therefore I will call upon him as long as I live." "The pains of death surrounded me, and the pangs of shield laid whole of me. I found trouble and sorrow. Then I called upon the name of the Lord. O Lord, I implore you, deliver my soul." And this is the verse that we completed on Tuesday. "Gracious is the Lord and righteous." Yes, for God is merciful. And we'll now move into verse 6. But before we get into verse 6, I just want to share an experience that I had on yesterday. So I went to football last night. Thankfully, there was a break in the rain. So although the field was a little slippery, there was no rain during the game. So played football, it was all right. I mean, it's football, so you know it has to be at least this good. But it was okay. Finished the game, went to the vehicle to change, opened the car, did what I needed to do. All right, sat down, ready to start the car, realized that the key wasn't fitting in the ignition. Sounds like, what is happening here? Looked at the key, realized that half of the key was missing. Apparently, when I opened the door, and don't know if it's because of my overwhelming strength or because I was tired, so I wasn't paying attention, the key broke off in the door. So when I was opening the door, the key broke. Didn't realize until I tried to start the car. My first thought was, oh, Jat, now I'm in a world of mix-up because you have to find a way home, you have to go sort out this now, what am I going to do with the car, etc., etc. But reminiscing on the mentality that I should be having based on the very Bible classes that I'm teaching, I decided, you know what, Stephen, rather than focusing on the negatives, let's look at some of the positives. The first thing I thought was, hey, Brandon plays this football game with me. I need to go up to Grenell's to see if I can find a spare key for this vehicle. Brandon lives in Mona. So not only would me asking him not to be an inconvenience to him, I would be asking someone who, even if it was an inconvenience, he would be willing. So one blessing right there. Church brother, close friend, playing the same football game where my car, where the incident happened. Brandon drove me to Grenell's. Opened Grenell's, I said, here's another blessing. The place where I work happens to afford itself vehicles that if I cannot find the spare key to open the car, I can still drive something home. So that's a blessing right there. Two, I am in a position at said place of employ that I can carry the key to open the place and access the vehicles on me without needing permission from the employer. That's another blessing right there. I was able to get to Grenell's, couldn't find a spare key, but I got another vehicle, and I drove home with that vehicle. Got home, looked for the key with my mother, couldn't find the key. I was like, okay, so then I was going to have to get a locksmith to remove the broken key all the same. So I guess we're just going to have to ask them to make a new key as well. Thankfully, I have a church brother, Kemar Blackford. For those who were in church last third Sunday, they would have heard Kemar speak of his plight re-locking his own key in his car. And that is something that Kemar has done on more occasions than I'm sure he's happy. So he has gone through multiple locksmiths and has become capable in discerning which locksmiths are good and which locksmiths aren't good. I called Kemar, and I said, Kemar, this is my situation. You know, any locksmith he can recommend. Kemar recommended to me the locksmith that he had used the last time. Fortuitously to me, that locksmith lives in Portmore. He doesn't drive, but I called him, I spoke to him. I said, Kemar, tell him the situation already, I'm good. And this afternoon, if I can pick him up, we can go and sort out the situation. Blessings upon blessings upon blessings. And it highlighted to me how important the perspective with which we use to look at the situations that we go through affects the way we view the things that we have and the things we should be grateful for. I could have complained that I was unfortunate, that why the key often broke off here or with me in the night? How much stress it would cause me to try and fix all of these things? And all that would have given me is anxiety. I could have come home, and I could have been worrying about how I would sort out things later, how long the vehicle would take, daddy, dad would vex. Mom did tell me that I shouldn't go football, what she was going to say when I reach home. But a lot of the times, if we focus on the things that we should be grateful for, if we focus on the blessings in the struggles that we go through, it will cast such a massive shadow over the things that we are complaining about that we'll realize that, boy, you know, I don't really have anything to complain about. And that was the conclusion of my situation. Because I don't really have anything to complain about. And it is such a refreshing perspective to have when going through struggles, recognizing that the blessings are much greater. So just me sharing my situation and my encouragement to you that when you are going through a situation that seems to be a struggle, a trial, try to think firstly of the blessings within this struggle and try and use that to alter your perception. It will make going through or facing that challenge a lot easier. All right, so moving on to where we left off. So verse 6 says, "The Lord preserves the simple. I was brought low, and he saved me." This verse gave me some challenges to begin with because of some of the definitions. So let's see if we can go through it and come to enlightenment together. So preserves here, shamar. It's a verb. It means to hedge about as with thorns. So to hedge about here, meaning to put a hedge around. And it gives the implication of that hedge having thorns in it. So essentially, some form of protective hedge. If we want to think more now, nowadays, think of a barbed wire fence. So the fence is placed around something to protect it, to preserve it, to keep it safe. And then you put barbed wire on it so that even if people try to jump over the fence, the barbed wire is there to prevent that kind of circumventing of the hedge. And by implication, it means to guard, to protect, or to attend to. In this scenario, it speaks more to the guarding and the protecting. So when it says that the Lord preserves here, think of it as him putting a hedge around in a protective manner. You're not open to attack. You're not open to being affected by others. God is protecting you. And who does he protect? The simple. So this is where I had to address this or look into this more deeply. So simple here means silly, i.e. seducible. So the word seducible means capable of being led astray or naive. And it gives, if you know the word seduce, when somebody tries to seduce somebody, usually they use their wiles or their charms to influence them to doing what they want them to do. If I seduce somebody, I use my wiles or my charms to try and get them to do what I want them to do. And the idea that I get here of what is, of who the simple are, if we look at it from a Satan being the seducer, then the simple here can mean any individual. So anyone who is open to the seduction of the devil, and we all are, could be considered simple here. But the idea that naivety is brought in gives me the impression that not only are these individuals open to seduction, but there's a level of innocence there. So it's a being led down the wrong path, but not really knowing that you're being led down the wrong path. And it brings us back to the idea of sheep. And Jesus, this is, David was a shepherd. So he was quite used to making a lot of sheep references and sheep metaphors. And one of the things with sheep is that sheep are easily led astray. Sheep are seducible, for want of a better word. Sheep are silly. They're not stupid, but they're more prone to being led in a particular direction, providing those who are leading them are leading them in the wrong way or the wrong path. And we know that David establishes God as the good shepherd. And the Lord is my shepherd. So here, it reinforces the kind of preservation that God provides for us, that in spite of our frailty, in spite of our simplicity, in spite of the fact that we're so easily drawn astray by the devil, God still puts a hedge around us. God still guards us. God still protects us. And that helps me to recognize that, boy, my battle against sin, my battle against the devil, my struggle with temptation doesn't necessarily have to be futile. There's sometimes when I keep giving into the same thing over and over again, and you get the idea that, boy, I am never going to be capable of overcoming this. And if I look to myself, my simple, silly, seducible self, then perhaps that is true. Perhaps I will never be capable of doing that. But if I allow God to place a hedge around me, if I allow God to guard me, if I stay within the confines that God has provided for me to be protected, then I can be preserved. The problem is though, a lot of the times, like sheep, I stray away from this preservation. I stray away from the hedge. I am going about my business seeking after the desires that I have. But if I stay there, then God will protect me. And that is something to encourage us, not just to stay, but to return if we have strayed. So God places a hedge around the simple. Is that clear to everyone? If it is not clear, please feel free to ask for clarification. You can raise your hand. If I'm not seeing any hands being raised, then I'm going to assume that it is clear. One, two, three, all right, wonderful. "I was brought low, and he saved me." So David here, once again, speaking to his condition and God's response. Brought low here means to slacken or be feeble. So to slacken or to be feeble. Figuratively speaking, it means to languish. And the word languish means to become dispirited. Another term that we see a lot of times in the Bible is to lose heart, to become discouraged. So when David said he's brought low here, it doesn't mean in a physical sense that his body is lowered. He's speaking to his spirit. He's speaking to his zeal. He has been brought low internally. And the passage here says that God saved him. And the word saved here, yasha, it's a verb. It means to be open, wide, or free. To be open, wide, or free. And it means to save, to free, or to succor. And here's another word that we're learning in here, succor. It means to go to the aid of or to relieve. And that last term, their relief, speaks more to the kind of salvation that is provided here. So God, so David was brought low in his spirit. He felt feeble. He languished, and God gave him relief. But this isn't a situation where David is locked up. That is not the kind of salvation that God provides there. What God provided here is relief, aid, and escape from the feeling of being brought low. And we see in how God saves in different ways and different means. And that is one of the things we're going to look at in verse 7 specifically. So in this passage, I'm seeing in the chat. Okay, Sister Endala is helping me out. Apparently, the word succor in English comes from the word, I don't know how that's pronounced, and I'm not very troubled with it, but similar spelling in the French, and it means help. So thank you very much for that lesson, Sister Endala. But don't tell anybody that I used to the French in high school. So yes, so David here reinforcing the fact that God preserves, protects the simple, the easily led astray, that he was brought low, he was low in spirit, and he was saved by God. God provided him with relief. Verse 7. Psalm, so it says, "Return to your rest, O my soul, for the Lord has dealt bountifully with you." The word return here, I'm not going to try and prove it. I think it's shob. It's a verb, and it means to turn back or return to. To turn back or return to. And one of the things about doubt and worry is that it takes us away from our peaceful state. It takes us away from our place of joy or happiness, and it takes us to a place of anxiety. And when we have struggles, when we have trials, and we cannot seem to figure it out, we cannot seem to identify how we're going to go through it, a lot of times, or mentality, or mindset, or mood moves from a place of joy, moves from a place of peace to a place of anxiety, to a place of unrest, to a place where we languish, where we feel brought low. And what David is commenting on here is that a return should take place, a turning back, a going, a returning to. And what exactly is that? It is to his rest. And the rest here, manowak, it's a noun. It means quiet. And figuratively speaking, it speaks to a home. So it means quiet, and figuratively, it means, it refers to a home. And when we think of home, we think of our safe place. We think of our place of solitude, a sanctuary, returning home. When you're homesick, you want to go back home because home is the place that you know. Home is the place where you can rest. Home is the place where it is quiet. We're not disturbed. We're not facing the struggles outside. This is where we can come to feel safe. And a lot of the times, or the struggles and the trials and the tribulations affect that peace, affect that quiet, draw us away from home. And David is saying, that is where we need, where he needs to return to. He needs to return, or better, he is returning to quiet. He's returning home. He's returning to that place of peace. And we looked at passages, same Psalms, where the same word used for soul speaks to entire being. So he's saying his entire being, mind, soul, body, should return to this place of peace. And we see the word for. And for, as we said, is a conjunction, and it speaks to for the reason that or on this ground. So David is saying that our return to rest in our entire being is on this basis, is for this reason, is on this ground. And what is that ground? That the Lord has dealt bountifully with you. And as I was sharing my experience, that is what I found. The peace in spite of the tribulation that I was going through at the time, the struggle that I had to figure out was based on me recognizing how well God has dealt with me. He has provided me with friends and with church family members in my immediate circumstances. Not just that I have to reach out to, but that are right there at my fingertips to aid me in my situation. He has provided me with an employer who is also a member of the church, who is also my father, who has provided me with the means to circumvent the current challenges that I was going through. Right there, I could return to a place of peace, to a place of safety, because I knew and I recall that God has indeed dealt bountifully with me. And that is what David is encouraging us to do. Return to our rest. Don't allow these situations to cause you panic, to cause you to doubt, to cause you to worry. Why? Because God has dealt bountifully with you. And I'm sure if we all think about what God has done in our lives, we have to acquiesce to David's position on this matter. We have to say, yes, it's true. God has indeed dealt bountifully with me. Why am I overly concerned? Why am I anxious? The word dealt bountifully here means gamal. It's a verb, and it means to treat a person. And it can be used positively, and it can be used negatively. So to treat well or to treat ill. And by context, it's clear which definition David is using here. It means to benefit or to requite, to bestow upon or reward. And David is saying that God has bestowed upon you much. God has rewarded you plentifully. That in and of itself is enough reason to feel safe, to not worry. Moving to the last verse. Moving to the last verse. For you have delivered my soul from death, my eyes from tears and my feet from falling. So this is an extension of God's bountiful dealing with David. So David doesn't just leave it up in the air as, um, as a vague statement of how God has dealt with him bountifully. He goes further now to, to specify some of the ways that God has dealt with him bountifully. And he focuses on God's deliverance. That God has delivered his soul from death, his eyes from tears and his feet from falling. The word deliver here uses the word chalat. It's a verb and it means to pull off, to pull off. Intensively, it means to strip. And reflectively, it means to depart. And I'm not going to go into the English, um, of intensive pronouns and reflective pronouns. But, um, essentially intensive, when something is used intensively, it is used to, to show emphasis. When something is used reflectively, it is used to point back at. But in this case, David is using the word intensively. And it gives the idea of string something that binds. The strip to take off chains essentially, to take off a noose, which is what David used in, in the initial passages when he was speaking about, um, the pangs and the pains. All of this was in relation to tightness or in relations to, um, suffocation. So when David now here speaks of delivery and using the term pull off, he's giving the idea that the things that binded me, the things that were tight around me, the things that were suffocating me, God has pulled them off and has delivered me as a result of that. It also means to draw off or out or to withdraw. Ie to deliver or to save. But to draw off something that is on or to draw out of somewhere that you are locked in. And, um, English lesson here, so this, this one is a little more complex. But this is one of my favorite figures of speech or figurative devices. And it's called zugma. Very interesting name. You probably never learned this one in school, which is a bummer. But it means, or it is a figure of speech in which a word applies to two or more other words in different senses. So zugma is, is used in this sentence in which the word deliver applies to my soul from death, my eyes from tears and my feet from falling in three different ways. And if we look back in this same Psalm 116, we see where David uses the term saved and uses three different Hebrew words. Each of these Hebrew words speaks to how deliver here is referring to each of these three terms. And essentially what David is pointing to is that in God's deliverance, God provides escape. So Ie, ie his soul from death. The deliverance here is deliver meaning to allow one to escape. My eyes from tears, deliverance in the sense of providing relief, which is what we saw from the term save used in verse seven. And then my feet from falling, delivery here in the sense of stability and security, which is what we saw him use in the passage, um, in the, when we spoke of the Myriacle and set his feet. That deliverance there is, speaks to security and stability. So David here phrases the language using the figurative term, um, the figure of speech zugma so as to speak of God delivering in multiple ways. And this is encouragement to us because it shows the power of God. That God doesn't just have the ability to deliver you, your soul from death in the sense of salvation or escape from the consequences of sin. God also has the capability to deliver your eyes from tears, to provide you with relief as you go through life, to provide comfort, to provide encouragement as we struggle through our situations. But God is not only limited to deliverance through escape and deliverance through relief, but God can also deliver through a feeling of security to keep us stable, to allow us to overcome situations. So it's not just relief when we fail or when we fall or when we grieve, but also deliverance through overcoming, through standing strong, through persevering in our tribulations. God has the capability to deliver in whatever circumstances we face. And this is what David says, provides him with peace, allows him to, his soul to return home. Because he knows whether it be circumstances that will take his life, God can deliver him from death. Whether it be circumstances that cause him pain and cause him sorrow, God can deliver his eyes from tears. And whether it be circumstances that try to knock him down, that try to press him down to the point where he cannot move, God can deliver his feet from falling. There is no circumstance, there is no trial, there is no tribulation that he can face that God doesn't have the capability to and that God hasn't already brought him through. And remembering that, focusing on that, is peace, is safety, is solitude. And if we take that same mentality, then when we are faced with similar circumstances, then we will also be able to overcome. We will also be able to feel peace and safety in our circumstances. Any questions or queries or comments before we move into an exercise? I feel like I've been talking for too long. Um, I see a hand raised. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
No, it just reminds me of the song David that says, I mean Stephen, that says, count your many blessings. And it says, name them one by one. It is so empowering when you can name the blessings one by one, then you really see how God comes through for you.
I, I think Engel sang the song this morning as well.
Yeah, right. Name them one by one.
I think funny enough, if we were to sit down and name our blessings one by one, we wouldn't even have time to focus on the negatives because we would, we wouldn't be able to finish. And fo- funny enough, Sister Smith, as is your talent in this class, you know how to jump ahead of exactly what I'm going to do. Because it be, what we're going to do. Before we look at this, we have an activity that I want us to go through and it's called Lyrics of Love. So I want you to write down a line or two. And when I said two, I mean literally two, no more than two lines from a favorite song or hymn that provides you with the following. So support during your struggles, thanksgiving during your triumphs and happiness during hardships. So I want you to think of three songs. These songs do not have to be primarily gospel songs. If the lines of the songs provide you with support during your struggles, thanksgiving during your triumphs or happiness during your hardships, then the songs are applicable. So I want you to write down the name of the song. Um, and one or two lines from those songs that really, um, that you're really in each of the, the song that you listen to during, when you need support in your struggles, the song that you listen to, the thanksgiving and happiness in your hardship. Let's get to work. I don't think it should take us more than ten minutes, well, seven minutes, we have seven minutes to do this. And then we will, we will discuss. Sister Hobbs, go ahead. No, Dr. India Hobbs, Sister Hobbs. Alright, um, so yes, so please take the next seven minutes. Um, I want as much of us to share as is possible because I am looking for more songs to listen to in these circumstances. Um, and know definitively that Brother Smith may hit me with some songs that, uh, were, were before I was born. So I'm looking forward to that. Please, please enhance my playlist. We're ready or we need one more minute? Presume the silence means we're all ready? Alright, wonderful. You don't need to, you know, what I'm going to ask is that if you, you can share the names of the songs for all, for all three. But, um, you just share one of them in regard to the lines. Also Brother Laconce, that song is on my list. I'm going to have to ask you to take it down. Uh, Laconce, I'm going to have to do that one. Um, don't know what to do in my playlist. But also this is for points, please note, so can you raise your hand for those who want to, to answer? And if you have typed it in already, then I will just read it in the, at the current time. So raise hand for those who haven't typed and want to get some points for their team. Any hand raising about they want a point? Alright, go ahead, go ahead, um, either Sister Sandhya or David.
Um, Stephen.
Go ahead, David, yes? Oh, yes, so tell me the, tell me the songs for each and then tell me a line or two from one of them.
Alright, support during struggles. Um, my, my, my standard go-to is Jehovah Jerry. My provider, his grace is sufficient for me.
Okay.
Um, but there's a song that I don't know the title of. I think the title is, hear O Lord. The, the line is, hear O Lord, the sound of my voice. Hear O Lord and have mercy. My soul is longing for the glory of you. Hear O Lord and answer me. That's support during struggles.
Alright.
I get a point for each category.
Can you continue, Brother David?
I think I'd like to second laugh a while later. Um, thanksgiving during triumphs. Give thanks with a, with a grateful heart is, 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 is one of mine as well. Um, another one is God will make a way where there seems to be no, no way.
I had that one of yours.
Okay, okay. And, and, and happiness during hardships. I don't have all the words, but it's, it's You Say by Lauren Diego. First two lines that I was able to find. I keep fighting voices in my head that say I'm not enough. Every single line that tells me I'm not enough. And then I get the rest of the, the, the verse, you know, lines in there.
Well, thank, thank you, David. Um, thankfully this is recorded so I can come back and make a list of all these songs that I need to, to add to my, my usual playlist. Um, go ahead, I see. Andy Sally, go ahead.
How great the Lord.
That's for support during your struggles?
Yes.
Okay.
Your grace and mercy brought me through. I'm living this moment because of you.
That is for thanksgiving?
Oh, God, yes. Our God is an awesome God. He reigns from heaven above with wisdom, power and love.
That's for happiness during hardship?
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent song. David as well, excellent selection. Um, Sister Smith, go ahead.
For support, hymn number ninety-one, because he lives.
I know that because he lived.
I can face tomorrow because he leaves all fear is gone. Thanksgiving, I'll say, count your many blessings. Name them one by one and you'll see what God has done. Happiness, standing on the promises of God.
Alright, excellent, excellent selections. Um, but my, my mom is going to use my computer. Go ahead, mom.
Okay, for Thanksgiving, I have to God be the glory. For happiness, great is thy faithfulness. And for struggle, for Jesus, Savior, Pilots me, over life, tempestous sea. Unknown waves around me roll and something another.
Powerful lyrics there and something another. Go ahead, Brother Smith.
Huh? It's in the chat.
Where's the box?
It's in the chat.
Okay, okay. Alright, so let me, yeah, so let me go, uh, before David, I see a hand raised again. Is it for Sandhya? Or a comment? Okay, go ahead, Sister Sandhya, and then I'll get to the ones in the comment.
Alright, so for support during struggles, um, there's a song by Brooklyn Tabernacle for thou Lord. A shield for me, my glory and lift up my head. And then for Thanksgiving during your struggles, Brooklyn Tabernacle again, I like them. Magnify the Lord with me, from exalt his name forever, glorify the Lord. And then for happiness during hardship, home of the soul.
Excellent, excellent. And I'm sure Alan, Alan is nodding his head with you for Home of the Soul. That's one of his favorites. Alright, so let me, let me get to some in, that are in, in the chat. Oh, I have to scroll up quite a bit. Alright, so for Brother Smith, um, support during stru- struggles. How sweet the name of Jesus sounds in a believer's ear. It soothes his sorrows, heals his wounds and drives away his fears. Brother Smith, which song is that?
Nice song.
I, I never said it's not a nice song, mom. I just asked.
How sweet, how, they say it, how sweet the name of Jesus.
Brother Smith, sometimes the songs don't name how it started.
I must put it there, but I, I am a responsible person, so I put the name there.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Brother Smith. Um, and, uh, happiness during hardships for Brother Smith, a mighty fortress is our God, a bulwark never failing. And for Thanksgiving. Thank you for, I was going to ask if the name of that was also at the beginning, but as per usual, Brother Smith provides with, with the clarity. Um, sister and, well, brother and sister and Alan, I'm not sure which this is for. If the skies above you are gray, I don't think anybody needs to ask what the title of this song is. But just in case you don't know and want to do some research, it is Sing and Be Happy. One of the greatest songs ever composed. Um, habit, uh, Thanksgiving, thank you, Lord, for loving me and thank you, Lord, for blessing me. And for support, tell it to Jesus alone. Or be with me, Lord, I cannot live without thee. Or my hope is built on nothing less than Jesus' blood. Otherwise, the, the understandable sister, sister and Alan, sometimes it's hard to pick one. Um, thing from Tracy Peart. Great is thy faithfulness, oh God, my Father, there is no shadow of turning with thee. I'm not sure which one this is in relation to. It could be all of them. It's such a powerful song. Um, Sister Camaria, there's support during struggles. Many things about tomorrow I don't seem to understand, but I know who holds tomorrow and I know who holds my hand. I know that is one of Brother Smith's favorite songs too. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, Brother, Brother Lacount said Hills and Valleys by Toren Wells, which is on my list as well. On the mountains, I will bow my life to the one who set me there. In the valley, I will lift my eyes to the one who sees me there. I'm standing in the, let me not quote anymore. Um, so Chris says Thanksgiving Psalm thirty-four, Brooklyn Tabernacle. So we have another Brooklyn Tabernacle fan. I sought the Lord and he answered me and delivered me from every fear. For support, she says Kirk Franklin, after a while and happiness. Also Christine Getty in Christ Alone. So Chris, take away one of my songs as well, which is in Christ Alone. Um, Talitha says Thanksgiving Travis Green, made a way. Support Michael W. Smith, I will carry you. Happiness Pharrell, happy. Um, Engel's dictionary, oh, that's not the song. Um, and Brother Howard for support, what a mighty God. Um, seeing some hands here. But we have a few more minutes, so let's just go through those. Sister Paula, go ahead. Also, thank you for everyone who sent in the chat some excellent songs, which I intend to look up, especially half of the names that Talitha put up that I'm hearing for the first time, apart from Pharrell. Go ahead, Sister Paula.
Um, for support, um, I'm no longer a slave of fear. Um, for Thanksgiving, our God is alive, number one in the hymnbook.
Yep, we know.
Yes. And for Thanksgiving, you triumph, be still and know that God be still by Travis Green.
Okay, the second time I hear his name.
Yeah, these are my second songs. Um, my first, for all my, all of these three, personally I've gone with them already, so I just, these are my seconds.
Okay, okay. Um, go ahead, Rich. Thank you, Sister Paula.
Okay, for support during your struggles, I have intentional by Travis Green. Which says, all things are working for my good, it's intentional. Thanksgiving during triumph, he's able by Darren Albs. And happiness during hardship, be still by Travis Green.
Alright, so him and Travis Green, name called too much now for me, ignore it. So I'll add that to my list. Um, anybody else who have two minutes? I'll just, if nobody has, then I'll share. Okay, Sister Sandhya, Adzan, or I don't know if it's David or Sandhya, Tasha Cobb's Break Every Chain. Um, before I go through my list, password. Go ahead, Sister Smith.
Gracious, righteous, merciful.
Alright, that is right. Alright, so let me just share mine and then Paula, you have your hand up? No, no. You're taking it down, sorry.
Can I suggest that we just, no, just give discourse to Sister Smith?
No, I think Britannia has gotten a good amount of points, so I think we, anything exclusive between the two of them.
Don't see the points, no matter what.
Good idea.
This Sister Smith has been on a roll for the past three. I know Brit wasn't there last week, so it was basically handed to Sister Smith. Alright, so we have one minute left, so let me just share mine quickly. Oh, before that, let me let you know. The password for next, for, for, um, for Tuesday is Lyrics of Love. Lyrics of Love. And my three songs, um, for support during struggles, I had Toren Wells, Hills and Valleys, as did Brother Lacount. Um, for Thanksgiving during triumph, I had I Can Rejoice by Acapella. And for um, so happiness during hardship, I have in Christ Alone. And a specific version by a young lady named Christina Grimmie. I don't know if you know her. Um, she was on The Voice. I don't think she won, but she did reasonably well. But, um, she was killed by a fan at a concert, at the end of the concert. Apparently the fans came up to say hello. One fan came up, shot her and she died as a result of it. And every time I hear the song, especially the lyrics in, in Christ Alone where it speaks about even if I face death, I know that my soul is secure. I think of, of her and the fact that she actually died and it makes the lyrics of the song a little more powerful. So if you have the time to listen to this particular version, I promise you that it won't be a waste of your time. Alright, thank you for your participation. As per usual, we are almost finished with Bachbug and by almost finished, I think next three weeks we should be finished there. And we'll move into another Symptom of the Sheep. Um, class is going well, so we don't mind taking it slow. Thank you once again and we'll pass on to our announcements maker.
Thank you, Stephen.
Announcement maker? Or Engel?
So we take it on Tuesday, um, six thirty for Tuesday in the班课class. Please remember that on birthdays this week, let me see the chart comes up. Right, so Amanda Ferguson is November the tenth on Tuesday. Christopher is on Thursday. Roger is on Friday. And Soraya, we wish her a happy birthday on Saturday. Please remember NavLife will be the twenty-first of November at six thirty PM. Um, these, um, gaslighting is the topic. And so we will share that and we have a new flyer, um, this week, um, for that, so we can, um, share with that. Wish you a good week, um, a good day. Keep safe and hopefully dry. Um, continue to pray for each other as we submit our lives to our Lord.